Good afternoon, everyone, joining us for this council meeting. I'd ask as we begin that you all stand and join me in a word of silence and then we'll say the presidential allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, if I could have a roll call, please.
Brad Hand?
Here.
Sean Brewster?
Here.
Pete Hamel?
Here.
Wayne Barahona?
Here.
Tom Eggers?
Here.
All right. Then you have before you the agenda. Take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
All right, moving forward now into the public forum portion of our meeting today. A few guidelines I'd like to just share with you before we get into that. Anyone who wants to speak during the public comment period should do the following: raise your hand to be recognized by myself, then come to the podium and right here states your name and address. If you have handouts, please give them to the city clerk before the meeting. Be concise and limit your comments to four minutes. You may not save your time for later or yield the remainder of your time to someone else. And after seating, after speaking, please be seated. If you are addressing a matter on the agenda, state the agenda item you're speaking about. And if you are speaking on more than one agenda item, arrange your comments in chronological order. Try not to duplicate information that has already been presented. Direct comments to the entire council, not to an individual. Questions and issues raised during this time will generally not be answered during this time. Maintain a courteous and respectful manner. If you are the presenter on an item which has been formally placed on the council agenda, this public forum process does not apply, although you are asked to be succinct in your presentation. Iowa law requires certain matters to have public hearings, which have their own comment periods. Comments pertaining to a public hearing item should be saved for that item, and the four-minute comment period will also apply for public hearings. Thank you to everyone in the audience for attending this important meeting. So with that, are there any public comments that would like to be stated at this time? Harold, please come forward. State your name for the record.
May I proceed?
Go ahead.
I've got a couple of items I want to bring to the council's attention. I had a discussion with the city manager at some point concerning the fact that my wife had created a couple of signs that indicated that there was garden produce for sale with an arrow pointing two miles south. And Sam indicated that, like any other temporary sign, that that was permissible. And after two of these signs were stolen and had to be replaced, and I made repeated complaints to the police department and to the city through Sam because I had received no response, and to the mayor, we received a opportunity to try to secure that sign. It was temporary, being upwarming for a day or two at a time, and then taken down. And some people who were involved with the farmer's market admitted that they had vandalized a sign and became upset that I complained about their crimes in attacking this sign and taking it down and moving it. And so I observed one day at noon, my neighbor, who has admitted stealing other signs that belonged to my wife from our property, our farm property located south of town, attempt to steal this one, but it was secured with a chain and a padlock and a spent block. And he was unable to do so. And I have attempted to have conversations with the county attorney concerning this because it's a half-block from her office. And nobody has really done anything except that we went three times to the city offices attempting to speak with city management, and were unable to do so. The last time, we waited over 45 minutes. And we're told that the city manager was still on the phone, so we finally left. Then I get a call, not my wife, but I get a call, and then a follow-up letter addressed to me, not my wife, explaining that the problem is that our sign, unbeknownst to the city manager who told us it was okay to have it, is now illegal. And I promptly removed the sign, but I get a follow-up letter, two pages long, with extensive copies of city zoning ordinances, which, if one reads those, there's quite a few illegal signs around town, including the signs of the Sheldon Chamber of Commerce, the city hall, which doesn't have a permit for it at the end of Ninth Street, and all the temporary signs for campaigns and other things, from flu shots to assorted other things that no permits have been issued for. And when I went to city hall to attempt to view the records of the police department in accordance with the city ordinances, I was refused access. In other words, there are city ordinances and laws on the books, but they're largely ignored. And that's fairly consistent with my experience. Four years ago, on Thanksgiving Day, I observed this vehicle tearing up dirt roads out in the country. He then proceeded down Main Street here in Sheldon, left mud all over Main Street the day before Black Friday, parked right in front of the community building, and nothing was done to either make this individual clean up the street or to answer criminally for what he had done, either for the damage to the road out in the country or for the damage here in town whatsoever. And in addition to that, why, I had evidence that confirmed that on Ninth Street here in Sheldon, Iowa, an individual that had been in the RTF burglarized the home of Teresa and Hardog, kitty-cornered from where David Dykstra lives, and stole tools out of there. And this individual was allowed to roam around town here for months while there were warrants out for his arrest. And we believe that he was involved in a series of crimes, and nothing was done whatsoever.
You've got 30 seconds left, Harold.
What's that?
You've got 30 seconds if you're four minutes left yet, so...
Well, I was kicked out of here a long time ago when I attempted to talk to the city council, and nobody was even interested in finding out what's going on. In addition, we had a drug dealer living in our house, and I called the sheriff's office and the police department five times and confronted them about why they didn't use their drug dog to put a stop to this. And now you want to spend money to have a drug dog here where there's already one in the county?
Okay, Harold, that's four minutes.
Okay. Well, anyways, as far as having a standing army here for the city of Sheldon, why, I think you better think again about what the police department is up to because they aren't enforcing the laws here in this community whatsoever.
Thank you. Are there anybody, is there anybody listening in by Zoom that has any public comments at this time? No one from Zoom is stepping up? I don't, are you aware of anybody, Todd?
I have everybody allowed to talk if they so choose. They might be muted on their own end.
Okay. One last call for those listening in by Zoom. Now would be your time to speak up if you want to make public comments at this time. Okay. Not hearing anything, so anyone else here that has public comments at this time? Not seeing anyone else. Okay, let's move forward then. At this time, we're going to admit the oath of office to our reserve officer, Tara Rorda. Tara, if you would just join me up there by the microphone, I'll come down.
Sign is... Six feet, at least six feet. Please state your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Tara Rorda...
I, Tara Rorda...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will uphold all laws of the Constitution...
That I will uphold all laws of the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
State of Iowa...
The state of Iowa...
And the city of Sheldon...
And the city of Sheldon.
I will faithfully and impartially...
I will faithfully and impartially...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
Discharge all duties of the office of reserve police officer...
Just, can you repeat that?
Discharge all duties of the office of reserve police officer...
Discharge all duties of the office of reserve police officer...
For the city of Sheldon, Iowa...
For the city of Sheldon, Iowa...
As now or hereafter required by law...
As now or hereafter required by law.
Normally, you shake your hand, settle for... All right. Very welcome aboard. Next item is the consent agenda. Is there an item we are going to leave off of that at this time? If I, we can move forward with it? Okay, very good. Then I'll take a motion, entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye. Eggers? Aye.
You have no old business today. We'll be going to our new business. Kurt, I'd ask you to come forward. You have a guest here today...
I do.
With some exciting news.
Can you say the second people on Passau Town, maybe?
You may.
Those are from, those are from Taylor. Yeah, good afternoon. Yeah, I do want to take a moment and welcome out a stranger in the room. He's been in Sheldon many times over the last number of years. But Tim Stewart from Boulders Development has joined us at the council meeting today. And, you know, we're excited to announce on behalf of Tim and his group the plans to build a 40-room Cobblestone Inn and Suites hotel located on parcel A of Outlook X in Sheldon Crossing, which, if you think about it, is a 2.22 acre lot that sits in between the Crossroads Pavilion Event Center and the current Holiday Inn Express. In total, we'll bring in a total investment of about $3.5 million for the project, which we're excited about. This hotel will obviously be a great addition to our community as we continue to build off the momentum of Crossroads Pavilion Event Center that was built and opened in 2017 and has quickly turned into a premier facility here in northwest Iowa. This project will bring along with it additional revenue streams for the city of Sheldon in the terms of hotel motel tax revenue and obviously the increased commercial property tax for the new facility. The hotel will offer some amenities for its visitors to take advantage of, which will actually complement all the other hotel properties that we do have in our community, such as an outdoor patio will be included in this property, a fitness center, a beer and wine bar, and hot breakfast, which will, like I said, will certainly complement the other hotels that we do have here in Sheldon. In addition, based on our development agreement with Tim and his group, we will have the opportunity with this project to also consider adding parking for the Crossroads Pavilion Event Center through an easement agreement with the developer. If the city would, you know, down the road foresee that that might be a good opportunity for us to capitalize on, we will have an easement agreement with the developer on that property to extend parking if we see that that's advantageous for us. With it, create approximately 14 new jobs for our community. Another exciting component of this project is there's going to be about $860,000 of private investment committed, which will help ensure the long-term success of this hotel and obviously show us considerable local support for the project, which, again, we're very excited about. Just recently, the SCDC Board of Directors received a TIF application from Cobblestone requesting a 10-year full rebate based on a $1.5 million minimum assessment agreement on the project. The board did review it and unanimously approved a recommendation now for the city council to consider for formal recommendation and approval then for the project. In saying that, I'm not going to spend any more time on the podium. I want to turn it over to Tim. Tim's got a vision for Sheldon, which we're excited about. I want him to be able to express that to you guys. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Tim Stewart.
Welcome, Tim.
Well, thank you all. Thanks, Kurt, and appreciate the opportunity here tonight and through the years of being so welcome to the community and getting the opportunity to take a closer look. Just a little bit about us. We got started in the hotel business, and we're based in Dennison, but we got started in the hotel business by building a small 32-room property adjacent to a conference center that I helped lead, getting us, getting that put in place here almost 15 years ago now. But at any rate, we got started in the hotel business by answering a local need. And soon thereafter, we had an opportunity to look at further development, primarily in Iowa. But over the last 10-plus years, you know, we developed several hotel properties. Here, a few years ago, we were approached by Cobblestone, and their niche or how they looked at the marketplace was similar to how we had with our Boulders Inn and Suites brand at the time. And that was looking at these rural communities like Sheldon, like Dennison, that were underserved with quality lodging. And so, you know, we got into a discussion with them and a couple of years ago, made a decision to take next steps as far as where we wanted to go with our company and where we wanted to go in with the hotel business. We had developed roughly 16 properties, and the Cobblestone footprint today is roughly 150 properties based, you know, in a wider radius in the Midwest, but outside the Midwest as well. So we're excited about that opportunity and excited about bringing a Cobblestone Inn and Suites to your community. So, you know, we got introduced a few years ago, maybe even longer, you know, to Sheldon. And, you know, some of the things that have us excited about getting involved with development in the community have to do with not just the community and the commercial presence and the things that that brings, but that four-lane development out there on 60 and beautiful event center. I can't, I can't say enough about how impressed I was, you know, when I had a chance to visit that. And so, you know, with, with this process, we've taken a step-by-step approach. And after the event center had a chance to kind of get its legs on the ground and show that there was, there was, there was a need, you know, for further hotel development here, that's when the decision was made here, you know, roughly a year ago, to get involved in earnest as far as what that might look like. And we worked with the local committee here to begin with, and then, then once, once that was decided, and then getting involved with, you know, raising the equity, putting the financing together, et cetera, in order to make this happen. So, so that's where we're at today. You know, we've had some challenges, as all businesses have with COVID here in 2020, but we're excited about the future. We're excited to get in the ground here early next year. So our, our plan is to Q1, if it permits, but certainly by Q2 of 2021, getting a hole dug and getting construction started. And so we will be opening that property roughly Q1 of 2022. So at this point, is there any questions for us as far as, you know, what this development might look like? Kurt did a great job as far as detailing, you know, specifically what we're looking at building here in Sheldon.
If he mentioned it, I forgot, I didn't hear it. What kind of a payroll or what kind of a workforce are you looking at for this project?
Yeah. So Kurt had mentioned, you know, we're looking at roughly 14 employees. There would be three full-time employees, one being the general manager, head of housekeeping would be another, the assistant or front desk supervisor would be another, and then several part-time opportunities with that. So from a full-time equivalent standpoint, it might look closer to eight to 10 employees, you know, when it's all said and done. But yeah, from a payroll standpoint, I think we're looking at, you know, I don't know, I'm going to quote rough numbers, but we're somewhere between 175,000, maybe based on, you know, as this thing gets rolling, we're looking at a $200,000-plus payroll over time.
Wonderful. Great.
Yes.
Has the size of the unit been determined or is that still speculative?
Yeah, yeah. So it'll be a 40-room hotel development two-story is what we're planning on. And Kurt mentioned some of the other amenities, you know, in and around, you know, a beer and wine bar, hot breakfast. We'll have an attractive patio and landscaping plan, you know, along with that.
Great. Any other questions?
No. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you for coming to us today and joining us. We're excited. All right.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Tom.
Just wanted to, to tell Tim that I'm sorry I'm not there to, to see his program presentation in person, but I wanted to thank him and Cobblestone Inn and Suites for their investment in the Sheldon. This is just another milestone on our ways to adding more and more value to our community. So thank you, Tim.
He's acknowledging it and waving back to yourself.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So at this time, we need to set a hearing. You want to speak to that, Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. Underneath Part A there, 7A, it says, "In motion to set a hearing on contract for development, minimum assessment agreement and TIF application for November 4."
No action required today. They'll just...
We just need a motion to set the hearing.
I'll make a motion to set the date for November 4.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
That carries. All right, let's move on then to the item B there, the second reading of the ordinance amending the code of ordinances pertaining to urban livestock. Today would be the second reading. Is there anything that you'd like to say at this point? Speak to this, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I'd like to add is that in your packets and the explanation is the link to the Planning Commission Agenda for the 28th, where we have a draft ordinance for the Planning Commission to consider on the zoning side to allow, under limited circumstances, a small livestock raising subject to approval by the Board of Adjustment. Second reading of this ordinance means third reading would be heard on November 4. And yesterday, I'd received a call on, on another potential request. They did not leave a message. They said they were going to stop back in the afternoon. I haven't talked to them, so there are more requests coming. So I think it underscores the need for us to establish a better process. On that note, I also mentioned it to the, alluded to it in my Planning Commission report, but I did receive a call from a poultry farmer the other day who was quite concerned about the, the impact on his large poultry operation, and I'm expecting a letter from him and the Iowa Poultry Association for just in time for next week's hearing at the PNZ.
So was the, the alarm for, from a disease control perspective?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to say over the last, since the last council meeting, I've had probably a half dozen people come in and say, "We need completely ban it. Just no livestock in town." So I'm voicing those concerns. Those people that came in told me that they're absolutely against it and keep up the good work. So I just want to say that there's a people out there that think we should ban it completely.
Anything from you, Tom?
Not today.
Okay. On this issue? All right. Then we'll... I don't think... I'll make a motion to approve second reading? Yes.
Support.
And roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
And we will hit this again in November. All right. Moving on to reports. We're going to start with Chief Birch today. Anything you'd like to share with us?
A lot of questions. You guys have questions, why don't you make that?
Why don't you come forward to the, either grab a microphone or come to the mic by the podium.
For the benefit of those that are in the audience and will be viewing this later on, I know that part of your, a big part of your report is centered upon development of a command structure. Now, I know this is something that we haven't had. Could you just briefly explain what the benefits of a command structure would be versus how we've been doing it for the last however many years?
So I envision the biggest benefit would be accountability. We have two teams now, you know, we have two teams of officers that don't really see each other, don't always see me. So I envision having a sergeant on each team, and then they'd have accountability to that sergeant, so...
So that reduces the need to run to you with everything day or night?
Then if there's citizen complaints, they can go to the sergeant, you know, if they don't like the answer that they're getting from an officer. That's one of the biggest things I see. The other thing is, as we've talked about it before, is retention. You know, a lot of guys in this career want to try to attain rank of some sort, you know, not only monetary, but, but for more, more responsibilities. So I think it's a good way to recruit future officers and retain our current ones.
And how do you see this structure? What would it look like?
As in?
As in, what would the tiers be?
Pay wise you're talking?
No, I mean like, I guess what would be the hierarchy, maybe is a better word?
So I would do two sergeants, preferably.
Okay, so then you wouldn't go so far as like lieutenants and that sort of thing? You think just the sergeant?
I think the sergeants would work best just because of the two teams.
Sure.
There'd be that accountability on each team.
So then the two sergeants and then the chief at the top, and then just general officers below? And how have we been doing with hiring?
It's a work in progress.
Aren't we all?
Yeah. Uh, it's, it's tough. So we're getting there, I think.
All right. So what we have before is a resolution authorizing, a draft resolution authorizing up to two police sergeants. My question to you is, do we want to take action on that today?
Can we do that?
Yes, go ahead, Sam.
Um, Mayor, I had, uh, I had set it up so that, um, you know, this, this is important, but, but it can wait a couple of weeks. We wanted, we wanted to have the presentation today and then you could, you could consider the resolution at the next meeting. If you had any concern, we just wanted to get a, a consensus that this is the right direction and if it is, then we'll have it on the next meeting.
Okay.
I would support that, Mayor.
Okay. Is that, Brad, you were going to say something?
No.
Okay. So we will take this up then and we'll chew on a little bit and let it simmer and.
Okay. Any other questions? Just let me know.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to discuss today? We have another draft resolution regarding?
Yeah, so we, we brought up, um, Sam and I had an individual approach us with a rather large donation, um, basically contingent on us raising some more money and, uh, before K-9. So, and as everybody knows, we've never had a K-9, so I, I feel would be a great asset to the city.
So this is a matching grant fifteen thousand and fifteen thousand?
Yes, that's my understanding.
And that thirty thousand, would that be enough to get the K-9 program set up?
Uh, we're, we're figuring about forty thousand. So we're, we're hoping with the community support, we can raise that money.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the K-9 program? And again, we have a draft resolution. I would just figure we'll discuss both of those and just what passage of those at our next meeting then. All right. Thank you, Chief. Uh, moving on then, Sam, do you have anything you'd like to report on or comment on?
I do not.
Okay. Micah?
No, thank you.
All right. Kurt, is there anything else? Are you or Chantel at this point? How about you, Todd?
You. I took my chair with me.
So excited.
I know. I've been up here a while. No, uh, I thought I'd just give you guys a quick update on, uh, some things we're preparing for, for next construction season. Um, while we don't have a lot of construction activity right now, we are working hard, uh, towards getting some projects out to bid this winter, hopefully starting in, uh, two thousand twenty-one. So, street projects, which is the, uh, Oak, Oak Street, Rainbow Drive, uh, Pine Street, North Fifth and, uh, South Third that we've talked about. So engineering is coming along nicely on those. Uh, unfortunately, we have hit some bumps in the road on, on some of the, uh, Oak Street stuff and some of the Rainbow Drive stuff. Uh, not completely shocking that we found some, uh, soils that were less undesirable that have increased the cost on them, um, a little more than I would have liked to seen. Uh, I have a meeting next week with the engineer to, uh, discuss some of that stuff in greater detail. It may end up affecting how many linear feet of road we're actually able to do. But, uh, if we're going to take the time to reconstruct, we certainly want to do it right, um, and, and get a good road for the long term. Um, uh, we are working towards bidding that project, hopefully, um, December of, of this year. Um, and cast-in-place piping. Um, we, uh, we would like to do a cast-in-place piping project. You guys approved a, uh, engineering services agreement with Beck Engineering on that, uh, a meeting or two or so ago. Um, they, uh, they are working away on that. Um, for those of you that don't know, um, imagine taking a, uh, a long tube filled with resin. They stick it into the sewer pipe. It actually, you blow it in, it turns itself inside out. You then heat it with steam or, or, or another method and it actually cures into a pla- into a pipe. So you actually put a new pipe inside of the old pipe without digging up the road. Then they drive a little robot back in and they open up the surfaces and, and, uh, grout them up and so on and so forth. So, uh, we'd like to do that on, uh, Fourth Street from Seventh Avenue to Washington Avenue and then from the Washington and Fourth intersection north to Highway eighteen. Um, we look to take, um, that project out to bid either late twenty or early twenty-one. Uh, then the other thing that we're working on right now is, uh, the two lift station projects. So the NCC lift stations or lift station and the, uh, Thorment Avenue lift station. Um, DGR is working on those for us. Um, um, process engineering is moving along okay. Structural and electrical are actually lagging a little behind where I'd like to see, uh, but we are getting there. Uh, hope to have that out for bid first quarter of twenty-one and that would also be a summer/fall, uh, project for next year. So, um, not a lot of construction right now, but, uh, working towards a lot more next year. That's all I got. Any other questions?
The piping thing you were talking about, what, I'm assuming that's a cost-saving measure?
Yeah, so.
Quite a bit? Like, I mean.
Well, it all depends. So some of the pipe that we're looking at doing is, uh, in excess of twenty feet deep. So you can imagine if we got to dig up the road at twenty feet deep, we're taking out the entire street, digging down, having to recompact and then pour a new road on top. So something like that, something like that, yes, it's substantial savings. Um, the entire cost of what I just talked about is, uh, estimated to be in the one-ten to one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar range. I don't, I'd hate to put an estimate on it if we would tear all that road out and replace it. It'd be a million plus, for sure. Uh, probably closer to two million plus. So, uh, you know, if you're only, uh, six, seven feet deep, there's still some efficiencies and savings, but, uh, obviously not as great as if you're twenty-plus. But, uh, you, you're not disrupting service to, uh, to homeowners, to people trying to get in and out, uh, that way as well. So, uh.
Has this technology been around for a while?
It has. We've actually utilized it before.
Oh.
We did a project within a number of years back on, actually on Country Club Road. We had a, uh, we had a, um, clay pipe there that had linear piping or linear cracking for, uh, I don't know, fifteen, eighteen-hundred feet, something like that. And we were afraid of the pipe, uh, giving way and, and caving in from the top down. So we did the cured-in-place to, uh, to, to give it structure again. You know, to do the cured-in-place, you have to have a pipe that lays good on grade because if you've got a dip or a tip or, or, or a void, it'll, it's going to follow the old pipe. So, um, if you go look at Fourth Street, for instance, and Washington Avenue, you'll see a spot, uh, one, two, three, four spots where we dug the road up, made repairs. We did those by, because we cambered that section ahead of time. We knew there was places of really bad disrepair. Uh, the pipe that's left, we hope we can, we can fix just by doing cured-in-place. But we had to do some of those repairs in advance. Uh, we believe there's efficiencies in hiring that done locally in advance because cured-in-place guys want to put pipe in. They just want to put their, their material in. They don't want a subcontract to a digger to come in and dig up and do the repairs before. So we think there's a cost savings of splitting it up the way we did.
Good. Any other questions for Todd?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Todd. And we say the best of last, Angie, do you have anything?
I do not.
All right. All right, uh, councilman to my left, anything from you? To my right? Okay. I do have one thing here. I do want to share just a thank you from the family of Mark Mathis. Uh, and they comment, "Thank you all for the beautiful plant which has helped us through this difficult time." And then, "Never are we more aware of how much our friends and family mean than at the time of our sadness. Your thoughtfulness did so much to ease our sorrow." So. That's from them. I have no further comments, so at this time, we'd like to move into closed sessions. We'll take a motion for that, please.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Kent?
Hi.
Hamel?
Hi.
Brewster?
Hi.
Barahona?
Hi.
Eggers?
Hi.
So, all right, those of our guests are asked to leave the room now and we will have a discussion.
Does it do a countdown again or not?
No.
Should be like.
Back it. Very good. All right. So we are back in open session. No action is being taken at this time.
I would entertain the motion to adjourn.
We have a support from Pete. He's raising his hand. Roll call, please.
Eggers?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
We're adjourned.
Thanks, Todd. Take care, all.
See you, Tom.